All right, we are good to go with Salina media connection. So we'll go ahead and get the study session underway. This is the fourth in a series of five presentations that are a live Salina update, which basically means we're updating our housing, our housing plan. And I will turn it over to either Mr. Skreg or Ms. Driscoll, whoever is going to be.
I will defer to Ms. Driscoll. She's been leading this charge along with Mr. Sugar.
All right, Ms. Driscoll.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Today, we are talking specifically about tools and techniques. You know, Marty's been taking us on a bit of a journey, trying to kind of understand what we're experiencing as a community in regards to housing. Our original live Salina plan was done in 2016. Since then, we've had a lot happen. So the update, we started with meeting, one, updating our demographics, and then looking at how we would start to address our demographics and the need for housing, what some of the challenges we have in Salina are, and what we will need to do to work through those challenges, particularly incentives and the types of incentives that are out there. And that's primarily what we're discussing today, the tools and the techniques used to incentivize housing, particularly the types of housing, different price points, different geography that we're looking for in Salina. So with that, Marty will take it from here.
Okay, thanks, Lauren. You guys are gluttons for punishment, so you're in for another one today. As we take a little bit of a journey through, through the merc of programs and, and a little bit of housing finance, some of this will seem, if not elementary, it's helpful to me to sort of structure things this way, so, so please bear with me if, if it seems overly simplistic, it's entirely on my part. So with that, we will start out with the presentation. And, and as Lauren said, today is Tools and Techniques Day, looking at different devices that you are about to use and that you have within your control, as well as some other things that we can glean from other experiences, and including a little bit of new legislation that's, that's, that's coming up, it's really kind of interesting stuff. So with that, we will, as any good episodic series does, begin with what's happened up until this point, just starting out with, with where we ended last week. If you recall, the next slide, that we, we talked about the dynamics of markets and about some of what this all means for developers and for programs moving forward. So we know that costs are rising in such a way that in order to build housing that is affordable to a workforce and to a greater slice of the population, we're going to have to build some things that people are not all that used to building. And, and the kind of comfort level construction of, of building single-family detached houses on eight to 10,000 square foot lots and even larger, just isn't going to produce what, what we increasingly need. We know in Salina that, that values and rents tend to be relatively low, but construction costs don't necessarily follow suit, so that increases gaps. Interestingly enough, there is an initiative that, that I'll talk about a little bit later that looks like it was actually tailored specifically for Salina. It's actually in the infrastructure bill that's before Congress. And we'll talk a little bit about what that means and how, and how that might help. Beyond the kind of steady state production, the, the production that we normally get in housing construction in Salina, there are two factors that are coming up and beginning to hit us in the face. One is pent up demand, because we've been building not just in Salina, but throughout the country for a relatively higher end and not meeting the needs of people who are increasingly entering the housing market. We're seeing this, by the way, manifesting itself in the incredible national shortage of available housing and just talk to anybody trying to look for a house. And it's, it's, it's a pretty incredible problem that's going on right now, as well as major employment growth. But it's pretty tough for builders who are not used to speculating to build for these things that aren't, that aren't there. Finally, it's easier for, for a market to react to employment growth after it's already there, rather than to build in advance and try to finance the inventory, and that also entails risk. On the other hand, sometimes it's too late by the time the jobs are already there and people have begun to settle in, in other places. So all these factors, as we discussed last time together, entail risk. So, so as we think about the kinds of programs and ideas that make sense for us, we know that we have some individual imperatives to think about. And, and this gets down to thinking about what we want to encourage. Is it higher density, new formats, absorbing some of the risk for building new kind of stuff that people are not necessarily used to? Building it fast, building it of a large enough scale to mean something, to build rental housing and certainly to preserve the existing inventory. Can never build ourselves out of an affordable housing problem solely by new construction, which then leads us into our conversation today. So our next slide, which would be the last slide from the last, last meeting, that's fine, there we go, is, 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 is basically, what do we do? How do we put the tools together to address the, the risk that really tends to discourage housing production or create disincentives for it? How do we get our, our industries involved? How do we provide more diverse products? How do we deal with the gap, the financing gap that, that can make it very tough to build at, at, at least today's construction costs? So, so all of these things are going to lead us up to, today on April 19th, we'll talk about programs. And finally, at our next session on May 10th, excuse me, a weak breather to think, to, to think about the, the contours of a strategic program for housing development in Salina moving forward. So now we come to part two, today's tools and what we, what we are, are thinking about working with and what's within our control today. So a little bit of a, of a primer here on, on who the actors are and, and what these costs mean. And, and, and I know people are listening in, in the general public, so this may be helpful in terms of, of defining some of these terms. Project cost equals equity plus debt. Project cost is what it, what it takes to build stuff, what it takes to build a, a, a certain project. Equity basically means everything that you don't have to borrow. So, so equity can be cash or hard assets, including things like land, that can be brought to a project, things that you don't have to finance through debt. And there are a variety of sources for, for equity. They might be the developer, they could be investors who are buying tax credits, for example, or putting cash into a project. We consider public sector grants to be equity. If they're grants, they don't need to be paid back, and therefore they fall into the, into the equity side of the, of the wager. And it can even be contributions. So there are places where charitable organizations are heavily involved in housing finance, and they put money in at equity and may or may not get it back out at the, at the other end. Equity doesn't mean you lose the money, but equity means it's, 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 it's money that goes into a project that you don't need to borrow. When we think about homeowners equity, equity is what you actually own as opposed to the outstanding mortgage that you're paying off. So, so, so equity is, is, is that. Debt is what has to be borrowed to be able to build the project. So, so, so debt can be sourced from financial institutions, as it normally is, through secondary markets like Fannie Mae. So when a, a bank loans money to you as a home buyer, for example, typically that bank will sell that mortgage, doesn't hold it, although in some cases they do, will sell that mortgage to a, a secondary market who accumulates all these mortgages and, and, and then pays a servicing fee. So Fannie Mae, Federal National Mortgage Association, that we all heard so much about after 2008, is a secondary market, a place, it is, it is a government chartered, but not a government agency, but, but, but buys debt, basically, and, and earns interest and supports itself on, on, on that, pays, pays back the, the banks for originating the loans. Debt can be bondholders. So, so in some projects or in things like RHIDs, which we'll talk about in a few minutes, bonds might be sold, and, and those bondholders are lending money effectively to a project and are paid back by the operating revenues of the project. Or, in the case of many of us who were young homeowners at one time, individuals can, can, can hold debt as well. So the most common element of that is by going to your parents and asking for a loan to buy a house. But, 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 but individuals can also be financiers. So, 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 so these different agencies of equity and debt all have expectations, and that, and those expectations are in, are in the next slide. So main expectation of the debt holders, they get paid back with interest. That's, that's what they're primarily interested in, though pun intended. But equity holders have other variety of different ways of gating a return on their equity, and we touched on some of these in, in, in previous weeks. So they may have a cash-on-cash expectation. In other words, I'm, I'm putting my cash into a project, I expect a, a six or seven or eight percent return on my investment on an annual basis on, on that project that's generated out of, out of cash revenues. That's kind of the simplest and, and in the world of real estate, not necessarily the most common method of return, but it's there. Tax credits, we've, we've, we've already talked about. So in the case of what we call LI-TAC or Low Income Housing Tax Credit Projects, if, if I put a equity into that project, and it's a tax credit project, I get a certain percentage of that equity off my income taxes as a tax credit, basically a direct payment. So as, as an example, if, if I am in a project that is, that I've put $10,000 into, and I'm getting a nine percent annual tax credit on that, that's a small investment for these kinds of projects, I, I will be able to deduct for 10 years $900 for nine percent of that investment off the bottom line of my tax liability. So it's like cash, I don't have to pay the government. It's different from a tax deduction, it's a tax credit that's worth dollar for dollar as opposed to 35% or whatever the, the, the deduction rate is. Depreciation is another return on equity. So if I, if I am a part owner of a real estate venture, I can depreciate that over time. That, that, that process, that project may actually increase in value, but I can still depreciate it as if it were property. And that's why often people who are involved deeply in property development or ownership don't pay very much in taxes, because there are, are these various ways that are in the tax code that allow people to reduce their, or eliminate their tax liability. Tax losses, if I'm in a project that is on paper losing money, I can deduct that. So, so I, I, sometimes you wonder why there are so many hotels that are getting built and, and, and how they, how they all make it, and they do have to cash flow. But even if they don't for a time, the investors in those projects can write off those tax losses against other, other incomes. And finally, and, and very importantly, that, that property has value when it sells to somebody else. And at that point, and, and with good luck or, or reasonable investment, that property increases in value, so I'm going to get my proportionate share of the equity out of that at the back end. So, so equity investments in real estate can be very, very rewarding, but not necessarily in the conventional sense of, 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 of getting like an annual payment back in cash on your, on your investment. There are many things in the tax code, and then the expectation of gain at the end of your engagement in that project, that, that can all make this a very, very rewarding venture. And that's, that's important, because to a large degree, the amount of rent that you can charge or have to charge is, is generated by debt. And, and if these other ways of providing return and cash from the project on, on the equity side can be realized, it means that you need to, you don't necessarily need to charge the, the, the people who are renting quite, quite so much. But, but there are a variety of things that need to be done in order to, to make the overall project work in terms of other kinds of incentives, often tax driven. So, let's see, what, oh, yes, okay, so, so then the other, the other important factor that really creates the problems at the front end are gaps. So, so there are, this is by no means exhaustive economics course, and I'm not qualified to teach one, but, but this gives you some idea of the two kinds of, of two significant kinds of gaps that we need to deal with, and, and the two most common ones. Number one is the gap between market value and replacement value. So say that, say that it costs me $200,000 to build a house, and the market for that house is only $150,000 because of the overall values in the community or in the neighborhood or so forth. And there's a $50,000 gap between what it's cost me to build that house and what I can sell it for, that does not exactly encourage people to build that house. So, so that's a, that's a gap between market value and replacement value that needs to be filled. The other significant gap is a gap in revenues. And, and that's really where we come into the rental housing scenario that we talked about during our first week together, where the revenues that are coming into the project through rents and, and, and other income are less than the cost of operating and financing that project. So there are three pockets that generally need to be filled. One is O and M, what it basically, operations and maintenance, what, what it basically costs to keep that thing going. The debt service, the amount of money that, that, that I as a developer have borrowed to be able to build the project, and the expectations of my equity investors who, who, who may or may not want a piece of that, of that typical annual revenue. So, so there we have some of the, the issues that, that, that on a, on a fundamental basis we have to deal with, and which individual programs and incentives have over the years accumulated to, 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 to try to deal with that. So let's, let's delve, delve into those a bit. The first program is that, that, that I know something about, because I've been involved in it, is, is the Rural Housing Incentive District, or RHID. And, and I know that Salina has not, I thought you had, but has not done one yet, but you have several that are, that are, that are coming up. Basically, what RHIDs are, are tax increment financing for residential development. So TIF as such, in Canton, the state of Kansas, can't be used for, TIF being tax increment financing, which, which I'll explain for everyone who, who maybe doesn't know, is, is, is a, is a, is a very tried and true technique. And what, what TIF does is it freezes property taxes at a pre-redevelopment level, and then it allocates the added taxes created by the redevelopment project to fund and repay costs that are related to that redevelopment project or associated with it. So let's say, let's say, for example, that I have a piece of land, and that piece of land has a pre, pre-redevelopment value of $50,000. And I'm going to build a million dollar project on it. So the taxes, the tax base is frozen at $50,000 for a certain period of time, and the added taxes from the added $950,000 of value can be used to finance certain eligible development-related costs. So, so RHID is exactly the same thing, except that it's related to housing. So the RHID being a variation of tax increment financing allocates the added taxes created by a housing development project back to debt retirement or to the reimbursement for eligible costs related to the project. So the question then becomes, what are the, what are the eligible costs? It, it includes all taxing jurisdictions, but, and I'm not sure that this is in the statute or whether it's just, it, it is a possibility, but you can, you can exclude a certain amount of school bond levy, of school tax levies from, from the RHID. Otherwise, it ties up everybody's taxes who's a property tax jurisdiction. It, it can be, it provides front-end financing, basically in a way like selling revenue bonds. So a developer can put money upfront and then be paid back by the added taxes created from the project. That's not an uncommon way to do either TIF or an RHID. So as an example of that, let's say again that I'm the developer, and I'm, I'm going to loan a million dollars to a, a project to get it, to get it going, and, and in all probability, I will have borrowed that money from my bank. The added taxes created by that project are then used to pay back that million dollar quote loan. And, and, and so I, I have arranged that, that financing as part of, as part of the deal. In Omaha, where I'm from, we have used that over and over and over again for the last 30 years to finance rehabilitation projects in, in, in so much of our downtown and inner-city neighborhood, that's been financed that way. The other way to do it, and this is generally used on bigger deals, is to sell bonds. Bigger deals because it costs extra money to sell bonds, because there are financial agents and servicing fees and placement fees and so forth. So, so, but, but if the deal is big enough and beyond the capability, for example, of any one lender, you might sell special revenue bonds. They're not general obligation bonds. In other words, the city does not pledge its credit to pay them back, that are then retired by added taxes, again, the, the tax increment, or even by special assessments. It's interesting that when RHIDs were created, and, and I mentioned some personal interest in this, because the first city to really use this tool was Dodge City, and still really the authority on it. And, and, and we were involved in, in that as, as a result of housing work that we were doing in Dodge City on, on, for the, for the city. And they really have done the most, I think, in the state with the RHID concept. When RHIDs were first created, Salina was not eligible, because you couldn't be bigger than 40,000 people to be able to use an RHID. Now, it's up to 60,000. So Salina is an eligible RHID community. In addition to that, the sunset for such a, for an incentive district was 15 years, and that's now been extended to 25 years. Although you have the ability and the right to create a district for a shorter period of time, you've got, you've got a maximum of 25 years for this district to be able to allocate taxes back to it. But, but you can make it much shorter than that and, and can vary that, and that, that may be something to think about as we think about the future structure and consideration of these, of, of these, of these districts. Next slide. What can you use an RHID for? Well, you can use it to buy property, you can use it to relocate people, you can use it for site preparation, that is demolition, anything soils remediation, anything that's needed to, to create a developable site. It can be used for infrastructure, so sewers, lip stations, stormwater, streets, lighting, utility sidewalks, water distribution, all the stuff that's needed to provide urban services can, can, is, is an eligible use for an RHID. You cannot use it to build new houses. It's, so it's an indirect subsidy. So you can't say, well, I'm going to use an RHID and put this money into new construction. You can't, you can't, you can't do that physically for the stuff that's coming out of the ground, but it's pretty much good for everything else. And the associated activities have to be within the designated district. So in other words, you can't say, well, I'm, we're going to form an RHID district on Schilling Road, and we're going to put the proceeds of that district into North Salina, as an example. It has to be within, within the boundaries of that designated district. There's a process that, that has to be gone through to form an RHID. And I won't go into this in great detail, but it's, but it's really kind of a three-step process. First, the district has to be defined by the city. That involves doing a needs analysis, a, a resolution that creates the district, and then state approval through the Department of Commerce of that, of that district. There is a public hearing that has to be held before the district can be, can, can be formed, and that requires notifications, not just of the public, but also of the taxing jurisdictions. So the school district and the county need to be notified. Finally, there is a development plan, much like a redevelopment plan in a tax increment district or redevelopment project, that has to be prepared and approved by the city commission. And interestingly enough, the county and the school district have a veto over that. So, so it's a really important idea to be working in concert with the other taxing jurisdictions, because they have skin in the game as well. And, and, and they have the potential of being able to derail the entire process. So, so it, it, it creates the issue of, of making sure that, number one, it's really needed from a public policy point of view, and number two, that everybody who's at some financial exposure, that is other that is other governments, are on board with that specific project. So the advantages of an RHID are that, number one, importantly, based on what we talked about last week, it reduces risk. So it reduces the exposure on what I think and many people think are the most speculative parts of a project, and that is the front-end cost, putting the stuff in the ground to be able to support the project. It generates development without a direct capital outlay from the city. There's a sacrifice, and that is the added taxes created by that project for a while, but you don't have to put out money in the budget on a capital basis. It does not legally obligate the city. So if the thing goes kablooey, it's not an obligation of the city to bail it out. It requires planning and thoughtful development, which some people think is a disadvantage, but I happen to think as a planner that it's a really good idea to be thoughtful about what you're doing and not just say, oh, RHID, sure, that sounds good, we'll give it to you. So the disadvantages of it are the process, that it requires planning and thoughtful development, but also state approvals and so forth. Obviously, it defers the growth in tax revenue. So if the project wouldn't happen without it and really needs, or really needs it to be able to accomplish other development goals in the city, like job attraction, it may be worth that sacrifice, and it may not be a sacrifice at all, but nevertheless, you don't get the immediate tax revenue created by that particular development. It requires the jurisdictions to reach consensus about it, and it's not always well-understood by the public. So when you see, certainly see this in TIF projects, and I suspect RHID projects as well, that, well, they were granted $2 million in a rural housing incentive district. They weren't exactly given $2 million to go and build it. But the nuances of it can be a little bit more difficult to explain. So that's been a mouthful. I'll stop for air and questions if you have any about it.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the commission?
Trent Davis here, and I think I've heard the answer to this before, and I can't remember what it is. If the city is not legally on the hook for the money loan for the RHID, who actually is?
It's a great question. So keeping in mind that these bonds or loans or whatever are paid back by taxes, if the taxes are insufficient to pay back the loan, it is either the lender that, it is basically the lender who's on the hook for it. So if you're a bondholder and you bought an RHID bond, and the taxes are insufficient to pay, to make your payments, you're going to take a loss on that project unless somebody decides to bail the district out, which you're not, as a city, not under any obligation to do. If you're the developer and you've loaned your own money or your bank's money to finance an RHID, then again, it's the developer's financial risk or the bank's financial risk. But the city is not on the hook in terms of its full faith and credit to make a district that's underperforming whole. However, and this is a big however, you don't want to have a lot of RHIDs going bankrupt or because it's going to potentially affect your bond rating even though you're not obligated to do it, or it's going to make it very questionable that you'll be able to use the tool again in the future because the well has in a way been poisoned. So it's not a bad idea to be cautious, but it's also not the taxpayer of Salina's responsibility to make a district whole or to bail it out if it's failed.
What kind of timeline is on the approval processes?
I would, I don't know, and I think it's probably different from place to place. There is in the legislation a specific notice period and a specific period of time that it takes. I would generally figure from reading the legislation that it's probably, assuming everything goes reasonably well, and it doesn't take a huge amount of time to prepare the documents, probably about a four-month process.
Marty, that's about right. What I would add to that in the conversations that we've had with the state in better understanding this process is it's kind of a two-part approach. First, you have to get the district created, and then you have to go through the process of actually figuring out what goes in the district. So the time allotment for asking for the district or a resolution being passed by the commission and then being sent to the Department of Commerce. Commerce says typically about 30 days for them to turn that around, but we're hearing that they understand the need for housing in the community, so they are being very diligent about those requests. So we've been given assurances that they would turn them around as quickly as possible.
Yeah, that's good information because that's the one piece that I didn't know is how long it takes. We do, for TIF districts in Nebraska, for example, the state has nothing to do with it, so they're just created. How fast the state turns it around is kind of the unknown, and if it's about a month, then that comes out to be about right at four months.
And some of the timing depends too, Commissioner Ryan, on the amount of detail and the knowledge that the developer has for the plan that gets created for the district. Because some communities go and create their RHID district, and then it may linger for a while. They've decided that that's where it was going to go, and it may be a few months later or even years later when somebody decides, here's my project, here's what's going to go. And so developing that plan and the things that need to qualify to go in the district are kind of a whole other piece. So four months is optimal, but it can range depending on who's doing it and what's being done.
Now, I'm pretty sure that there is a time constraint on the initiator of the district too, so you can't just sit there forever and, right, they die if they're not acted on.
But there can be a little bit of a gap. You're right. I mean, you can do it for 10 years and let it linger.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Commissioner Hoppick here, and this may be for staff or this may be for Marty. Because of the timing of all this and not 100% sure how if there is going to be an infrastructure bill or dealing with the American Recovery Act, can, if an RHID is set up, bonds are sold, can those be paid off early? And if so, is there a prepayment penalty?
Absolutely not. I mean, there is no prepayment. Prepayment is what we, we as public sector lenders love to see. No, it's a prepaid, you ought to like buy them flowers if they pay it ahead of time. Because that means tax revenues flow faster.
Well, I just know sometimes there are people who have bought bonds expecting a certain cash flow on those. That's why I was asking. So in other words, if we set up, if an RHID was set up and we were able to have other funding come into play, we could use those funds and pay that off?
Potentially. I think it's fair to say potentially. I mean, a question like that, I don't think it happens every day, so I think it's worth the conversation having with Gilmore and Bell, our bond council, to understand that. And I think it's most applicable depending on what the development agreement is for that.
So the really interesting question, and I know the answer, I know the answer in Nebraska, but I don't have the answer in Kansas, is can you lend, can you be the lender of the money and then pay yourself back? So in other words, let's say that you get, this is not an issue that's come up very often, but let's say you decide to, you get a million dollars in American Rescue Act money, and you say, well, we're going to loan that million dollars to a project, and we're going to grab everybody else's taxes to pay that back. We're going to create an RHID, lend the money ourselves, and then reallocate the tax revenues from both us and the other jurisdictions to pay back that loan. Is that a legal thing to do in Kansas? And is that going to be, you know, it's something that I, as a community development director in Omaha, have done before, but, and using block grant money as the front-end money, and it'd be basically the same thing. So something to think about. I would defer to your bond council on that one, no.
Any questions from staff? Okay, we'll keep going.
Okay, here we go. Okay, so item number two is neighborhood revitalization program or the NRP. So, you know, again, this is something that you have the ability to create, and the NRP is a tax, and I'm sure you've done these because you've got the program already set up, that NRP's are a tax rebate. So in the case of an NRP, and generally people's experiences with NRP's in terms of producing housing have not been as powerful as an RHID. You have to, it is a rebate of property tax increases that is attributable to some form of residential improvement. So unlike the RHID, which is front-end financing, the rebate is back-end financing. I have to make the improvement, start paying taxes on it, and then I can get a certain amount of those taxes refunded to me for a period of time. So they require specific district designation. I'm probably not telling you anything you don't already know, and they provide a 50% to 100% rebate for the added taxes for the first five years of the rebate period that then drops to between 25% and 50% for the next five years. And the interesting thing about NRP's is that in a designated area, they can apply to a small project. So let's say I do, I live in an eligible area and redo my kitchen for a cost of $30,000, and my taxes, my property taxes go up as a result of that kitchen remodel, I can apply for that money to be rebated to me for a certain period of time. So it is more effective, really, in terms of removing incentives for individual projects, and maybe not quite so effective at leveraging large projects, although it can be very useful as we saw in our first time together about the power of reducing that annual outlay of funds to things like grants. So it's not, it's not an insignificant thing, but in many cases, it's the front-end financing and the front-end risk that is a bigger deal than the rebate at the back end, albeit useful. I have to have already taken the plunge, and then I can get my taxes rebated that are related to that, to the cost of that improvement. So next slide. So that's, those areas that are eligible for improvements in Salina, and again, I'm not telling the commission anything it doesn't already know, but there are two levels of areas. The blue areas have the deeper incentive, the green areas the lesser incentive, and the southeastern and central parts of the city are not eligible for this, use of this particular tool. So the advantages of it is that it's an incentive or really, really more kind of a disincentive remover rather than a risk abatement program because you've already taken the risk. RHIDs attack risk. NRP's can attack an operating gap, or it rewards reinvestment in a property. So as a property owner, if I'm worried about doing a major project in my home because I'm afraid I'm not going to get my money back out of it, or it's going to increase my taxes, it doesn't for a while anyway, and it removes the disincentive to making that investment. It's pretty easy to get these done, much easier than the RHID, and as I mentioned earlier, it applies to projects of all sizes. Easy to get done because these are pre-designated districts already, and you don't have to form a district or go through state approval or any of those processes. The disadvantages are that, again, it requires the improvement to be done before the benefits of it kick in, and it doesn't address the front-end risks that really are the biggest kind of immediate issue that we need to worry about right now. But nevertheless, a useful, a useful thing that Salina and other cities in Kansas have at its disposal. The third thing that you have in your immediate toolbox are IRBs or industrial revenue bonds. So IRBs have changed somewhat over the years. What they are actually is a financing pass-through with some distinct tax advantages. So the city can issue an industrial revenue bond to finance a commercial project. Commercial projects also include multifamily residential projects without incurring capital obligations or debts. These are revenue bonds again, and it is the bondholder or lender who holds the risk to it, and the city, and in many cases, the county is there as a issuer of the bonds. They were originally very useful because they provided an income tax exemption by virtue of being municipally issued bonds for economic development projects. And there was a time when whether a bond was taxable or tax exempt was really a big deal and could involve multiple points on your tax bill. The tax exemption allowed the interest rate on those bonds to be lower. Right now, interest rates on pretty much everything are pretty low, so that delta between a tax exemption and a taxable bond has been reduced. The tax exemptions were curtailed during the 1980s, during the Reagan administration through the Economic Recovery Tax Act. And so rather than allowing federal income taxes to be exempt on bonds willy-nilly, the government, through an act of Congress, established a cap for tax exemptions, for tax-exempt bonds that you couldn't, that a state couldn't exceed, and state had to come up with a method of allocating that tax exemption. That, by the way, happens right now with tax exempt mortgage revenue bonds. There's a ceiling that states have, and they can't issue tax exempt paper beyond that. So for a lot of traditional economic development projects, factories, manufacturers and so forth, they don't necessarily have the same power as they used to, but they can be a convenient thing. They are placed with the developer's lender or another private placement. So ordinarily, the city does not, although it can, issue these bonds as a public offering. Keep in mind, again, that the city does not have a general obligation to pay back these bonds if there's a default. And probably most importantly, right now, the city has the ability and does, as a matter of policy, offer sales tax exemptions and property tax abatement on IRB-financed projects. So the sales tax exemptions on construction materials and so forth, and that is not an inconsiderable an inconsiderable subsidy at the front end. And you have the power, although, again, not the obligation, to provide property tax abatement on IRB financed projects. Presumably, even if they're outside of N R P designated areas. So, right now, the IRBs are mainly a convenience and an exemption from certain kinds of taxes by matter of policy. They are not so much the federal tax exemption tool that they were prior to the 1980s. So, those are the things that we have, those are the things we have at our disposal, basically, right now. Any questions so far?
And one clarification, possibly. With industrial revenue bonds, correct me if I'm wrong, but they're directed at commercial activity, and so what we've been advised is for a rental property, is something that's going to be held by the owner as a commercial operation, lease rate apartments would be eligible for IRBs. A subdivision of homes to be constructed and sold to the occupants wouldn't be eligible for IRBs.
Correct. So, right.
I have a question for staff. I know that Marty said that the neighborhood revitalization programs haven't been as popular. How many, do we have any sense of how many N R Ps that we have outstanding, any projects? I can think of one since my time on the commission, but there may have been more.
The most recent and probably the most relevant example I can think of is the first phase of the Lee Buildings were eligible. In fact, we created a category of projects of exceptional community significance, which created a heightened rebate level. We do have some builder developers and landlords that are knowledgeable, the program will purchase properties and flip them, but we don't really see a whole lot of activity. And certainly don't see it as an organized redevelopment effort, with the exception of the Lee Buildings, but Mr. Eschol may have more specific numbers or recall something that I've overlooked.
No, not off the top of my head.
Yeah, and that's generally been the experience of Kansas, of cities in Kansas, that they use the R H I Ds more than the N R Ps. And it's interesting, because the N R Ps are really also designed for like individual rehab projects. And, you know, people either don't know about that, or the process is difficult. That's a very legitimate use in terms of rehabilitation and housing conservation, but it's unfortunately little used. And I think it's just because people either don't know about or don't see how these things apply to them.
Thank you. Any other questions before we head on? Go ahead, Mr. Schubert.
I'm sorry, one question. For, this Trent Davis again, for the R H I D, could a large employer or groups of employers be the ones to take those bonds? I don't know if they would do it on a investment benefit basis, or just as a part of their overall commitment to growing the community and helping their employers, I mean, employees out, but I imagine the return on that is not very high.
You're stealing my thunder for the next part of the presentation.
I will pretend like I didn't ask. All right.
Well, not to contradict the conversation.
The answer is yeah.
So, commissioners, not to contradict that conversation, possibly, but you may recall that each of the economic development incentives we've done for quite some time have been pay-as-you-go, dating back to the tax increment financing project for the Coles or Lambert's addition. So, the first, the premise that staff starts from, as we're dealing with developers, is we expect pay-as-you-go, meaning we're not issuing bonds, we're not incurring debt, whether it's the city's obligation or not, we're just not part of that debt transaction. The expectation is the developer incurs the debt, and then they, you know, are successful as they plan and generate the increment, and then they can apply it back towards the debt that they incurred. So, I would encourage you not to get too hung up on the expectation that we have to issue the debt. Now, we could end up in a conversation about comparison of interest rates and whether the city's interest rate is more favorable. And speaking with our financial advisors, they speculated that R H I D bonds are as much as 5%. So, I don't know that our issuance of R H I D bonds would generate a favorable interest rate for the developer, anyway. But we, I'm repeating myself a little bit, but we start our conversations with the expectation that while the tool may be available, it's on a pay-as-you-go basis.
Okay, so, tools. So, these are things that, some of them are, they're new and some of them aren't. And this will be a little bit of a sampler of different kinds of things. And hopefully, we'll, I'll be able to get through them without driving everybody crazy. So, let's move on. So, in order to try to make sense of it, I have divided the encyclopedia of redevelopment or of housing development tools into three categories. One category deals with production, with things that, in one way or another, encourage or reduce the risk of the actual physical construction of housing. The second are operational, so these are subsidies at the back end that are related to the operating gap that we might have, that we talked about a little bit earlier, that is filling the shortfall between operating revenues and fixed costs. And finally, resident tools that are really focused on the people who wind up living in the unit after it's built. So, these things are related. By the way, this is new stuff. I mean, I just invented this. So, you haven't, it's by no means part of a canned presentation. So, but, but, but one thing that our time together has really helped my thinking, too, is just sort of systematizing things, and it's, I really do appreciate, hopefully it's been helpful to you, but it's been helpful to me, too. So, let's.
One question. This is for rental property only, I'm assuming?
It's really for anything.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. So, when we talk about residents, it's both owners and renters, and as you'll see, places in between. So, production tools, that first category, is, again, focused on housing production. Its primary purpose is to reduce obstacles and risk to building stuff. It fills economic gaps, that is, the gap between the replacement and market value of a project. And in most cases, it provides direct monetary incentives for desired actions, so that it's aimed at giving people positive encouragement to the thing, the thing, the goodwill is really nice and civic virtue is very important. But, in capital markets, making a profit on stuff's a pretty good thing to do, too. And so, and so it usually provides a monetary incentive for people doing what we want them to do. There are some exceptions to that, however. So, operational tools are related primarily to reducing the annual cost of owning or operating housing, or filling gaps between operating costs and revenues. Resident tools are focused on the people who are actually the occupants of the housing, whether they're owners or renters. Generally, resident tools will reduce the percent of income that's directed to housing. So, that's the direct measure of affordability. And typically, the measure that we standard, typically use is a family or household should ideally pay no more than 30% of their household income for housing costs. That's kind of the federal standard. It also provides monetary incentives for desired actions, not unlike production tools. So, there are cases where, well, McPherson is an example of this, where a home buyer has actually paid something to buy a home or to move to town. It builds equity. That is, it helps people accumulate wealth, and as reflected by the equity that they own in their home or their housing unit. So, these are all a little bit different. They can be mixed and matched, and they're interrelated, but they can be put into one, for simplicity and clarity, they can be put into one category or another. So, let's start with production tools. So, I'll confuse things even more by saying that they fit into a number of different subcategories. So, tax-based tools, these are tools that use some aspect of taxation to create producer incentives or risk abatement. Are R H I Ds, which are based on directing taxes you're going to pay anyway on the project into front end costs for that district. So, R H I Ds or TIFs are tax-based production tools. They don't involve an outlay of money at the front end by the municipality. The LIHTC program, or Low Income Housing Tax Credit, was created a number of years ago, and provides an investment tax credit to equity investors in low and moderate income projects. So, the size of the tax credit, as we, I think, mentioned before, can be either 4% or 9%, depending upon the income groups that are targeted, and the percentage of the units that are available, or that are held available for those income groups. It has been very much responsible for a lot of the multifamily development that we have experienced over the last 10 or 15 years. Not all of it, but a lot of it, because it provides a very attractive option for the equity investor. On the other hand, yes?
What I want, a quick add about LIHTC, great tool, but for those who are unfamiliar with it, it's a program through the state. So, the city can support an applicant, but it's actually the developer who makes that application. And the state essentially only rolls out so many of them. We kind of say in the office, like, who's in line next? KHRC or Kansas Housing Resource Corporation, who runs this program, basically has a rule that if you've already got a LIHTC in process in a community, you can't have more than one. So, if you've got a project that's either in the middle of a LIHTC or wrapping one up, you've got something usually waiting in the wings. There's another developer, and if you can remember, we've had developers come to us and ask for letter of support in their application process. But, that tool is wonderful, but we are kind of out of the control loop as far as how many of those are being granted at one time.
Yeah, a great point. Remember that the LIHTC program is a federal program. So, as a result of that, the federal government only allocates a certain amount of LIHTC funding to each state. So, the state is, otherwise, there wouldn't be any federal income taxes anymore. The state is limited by its federal allocation, and so it then, the individual states then come up with a competitive process to assess who gets a LIHTC project and who doesn't, and what the priority for them are.
Mike Skreg here. My understanding is the 9% are more coveted and harder to come by. The 4% are not as enticing to the developer, just from a financial standpoint, but they are easier to come by, are not as competitive. And then, Mr. Schubert mentioned, both of them carry with them income qualifications. So, depending on the potential resident, that can also be an impact.
Yeah, yeah. So, the 4% can be a mixed income project. The 9% can't be.
And start updating LIHTC's lineup plan is, when you look at the amount of affordable, available rental housing in the community, we actually have a challenge that a lot of our units are LIHTC units, and they use the median income to set rent. So, if you're making more than, I think it's 42,000 a year, or even the high, or high 30,000s, then you can't qualify for those units. So, and it does look at overall households, but still, that is one of our challenges. It's that middle ground income rate that we've had a hard time getting units available for.
Yeah.
Is that 30,000 or 40,000, is that per household or per individual?
Household.
That's that median income. It is, it does start to build up over households, so the number of people you have deems the number of rooms that you'd need. So, there's a little wiggle room to go a little bit higher over that individual's median income level. I can let Marty keep talking and quick Google that number.
Yeah, but that's, yeah, I mean, the median income has graduated somewhat by family size. And, but, but the difference between the 9% and the 4% credit is that, is that 9% credit cannot be a mixed income project. It's all got to be a low income project. Low incomes, by the way, are not necessarily people in poverty. They're, but, but the other, a couple of other interesting kickers with LIHTC projects is that when you have to, if you, if your, if your project does not attract the requisite number of low income households, you've got to keep those units available and vacant for a low income household. You can't rent it to somebody else at market rate. Number two is that the tax credits run for 10 years, but the low income occupancy lasts for 15 years. And if you violate the rules of LIHTC, that is, start charging market rate rents or having market rate individuals and units, those tax credits can be recaptured retroactively, which the investors in those credits really don't like very much. You know, if you've taken, you can imagine, if you've taken $10,000 tax credit for 10 years, and then you're, then in year 13, there's a violation, and you're told you have to pay that all back with interest, that is not a very happy camper who's hit with that. So, there are significant strings attached to it. It's been a very, the other, the other interesting problem, and this occurs in, has occurred in rural markets, is that sometimes the LIHTC units are priced well above the ambient rents in that community. And that's, it's perfectly legal, but if you're, if you're charging $600 a month on a LIHTC project, which would make a lot of, which would make good economic sense in Salina, and you're a small town that's got, where people think $350 a month's a lot of rent, that project still seems pretty high income and doesn't rent up very well. So, it's a good program for bigger communities, and has gotten a lot of stuff built, but it doesn't always work for everybody. Okay, so, now comes a new program that doesn't exist yet, but it's really kind of based on LIHTC. And this is one that could potentially have, if it winds up becoming law, a lot of appeal on the ownership side for Salina. And this is called the Neighborhood Homes Investment Act. I got the H wrong there, but it's, it's homes and not housing, same difference. But, so, what, this is, has a $2 billion national allocation in the American Jobs Act, which is the current infrastructure bill. And what it does is it provides a tax credit to fill the gap between the market value of a house and the production or replacement value of a house or of a housing unit. So, let's say, this goes back to my earlier example of a house that costs $200,000 to build. Say, for example, that I'm a community development corporation or a CHODO, and we're building housing, it's costing us $200,000. housing, it's costing us $200,000 to build that house, but we know that we can only sell them for $150,000 because of the market in that neighborhood. So there's a production gap, there's an economic gap of $50,000 there. Just like the LIHTC program provides tax credits to benefit low and moderate income development, the NIAA program or NHIA program would provide a tax credit to fill that gap. So now if I'm an equity investor in a CHODO or that's taking a $50,000 loss, I can take that money off of my tax bill as a credit, up to 35% of the cost of the unit. So this would wind up, if it went into effect, wind up getting used much the same way as the LIHTC is, by selling tax credits. But the beauty of it is that it is a, it was clearly done by people who knew what they were talking about, which I find to be refreshing. And it applies very, it applies specifically to things like infill development in a neighborhood like North Salina. So it is a very, I think, a very powerful potential tool for getting affordable owner-occupied housing built. And it's something that I really hope becomes law, because it is really speaking to a significant unmet need in our housing environment. So remember that, NHIA, and it is a good thing, and it really has great applications for small cities and even rural communities. It's one of the few programs that wasn't done for big cities. It's very interesting. So other tax-based tools are, we've already talked about the LIHTC, but historic tax credits that are used for projects like, I suspect the Lee buildings used the historic tax credit that provide for certain kinds of equity investors who have property, passive tax losses, a significant tax credit to restore or rehabilitate or adaptively reuse national register-eligible properties following the Secretary of the Interior's rehabilitation standards. But a good program for existing units. And then there is, of course, the ever-popular depreciation, which is generally affordable to everybody. So those are all the tax-based tools I could think of offhand. There are development tools that involve direct payments or subsidies or incentives. So for example, you can and do, for certain kinds of projects, reduce or even forgive or eliminate permit costs, which, you know, may be a small item, or they may not be, but they are a benefit, a goodie that can be given to developers of things that you want to see happen. There are direct production subsidies, so that involves the actual allocation of cash to a project. That can take the form of grants or subordinated loans. Typically, if there's a public sector loan, it will be subordinated to private debt. So the bank or the private lender is the first mortgage holder, and the public sector is a subordinated loan holder. Payment can be deferred so that it becomes a payment that takes place, that gets repaid, perhaps with interest at the sale of property or transfer of title. Real estate acquisition, buying or accumulating land and then conveying that land at a write-down. The old urban renewal tool is a development tool. So it's basically, the public entity is taking the burden of putting the deal together and of selling or giving the land to a developer for a public purpose. Development entities, which are nonprofit agencies that can attract charitable funding, equity investment, have a special allocation of funds to them for development. So development entities can be nonprofit, so these are like CHODO's, Community Housing Development Organization, of which Salina has one, or CDC's Community Development Corporations, which are basically the same thing, but don't have the same kind of board, community-based board requirements. CHODO's, incidentally, have a 10% special allocation of LIHTC funding, LIHTC funding, and under the NHIA would also have a 10% reservation for NHIA-funded projects. So they have a kind of an advanced position for some of these tax credit programs. Employer-assisted housing is a development tool. So that's where we come into the question that we just heard. We'll talk about that in just a second. And then finally, another interesting development tool is acquisition, rehab, and resale, by which a developer, this is, this can be considered to be nonprofit flipping of houses. So a nonprofit agency can buy houses at relatively low cost, rehab those, and then resell them to a buyer. And in my city, Omaha, we've been very successful with that, with that program with nonprofits. So there are infrastructure-based tools. So RHIDs are an example of those. There are special assessments by which the public sector is providing the front-end financing. There is an idea that I've talked about before called an infrastructure bank, where the public shares in the risk or finances infrastructure at the front end as a loan, and then at a sale, takes out its respective portion of that loan. So to explain what that means, let's say that there's a house that costs $200,000, and an infrastructure bank, which is basically a public sector agency or entity, has financed $20,000 of that through the advanced construction of infrastructure. And then that house sells in five years for $250,000. The concept would be that the proportionate share of that then comes out of the resale proceeds. So that if it was 20,000 out of 200,000 or 10%, if that house sells for $250,000, $250,000, the city or the infrastructure bank gets back $25,000 or 10% of those sale proceeds, basically deferring that investment, getting it back at the back end. And loan guarantees, by which the cost of, the cost of building infrastructure and building the development, which is a front-end cost, is guaranteed by some entity, and so that the lender will make that loan. And then finally, there are legislative tools. These are not necessarily positive things, but there are various kinds of requirements. So there are zoning incentives that make it easier to do certain kinds of projects, like higher-density projects or innovative development. So for example, a lot of cities are beginning to make auxiliary dwelling units, second units that can be developed on a lot as legal uses in single-family districts. And there are other cities that are actually making single-family districts, zoning districts alone, that only allow single-family detached houses no longer part of their zoning ordinances. So I'm not recommending you do that, but it's a tool that places are using to increase density. And related legislative tool or mandates, minimum requirements, that is, if you build multifamily development, a certain percentage of that has to be available by mandate to low and moderate income or workforce prices. So those are the producer tools. I wonder if I could just go offline for about a minute. It's a little bio break that would be helpful, and if you'll indulge me, I will be right back.
No, that works, Marty.
Yes.
What I can add is, I believe Commissioner Hoppe asked about the average median income number. So the AMI, or average median income, is usually what HUD works with, and our current AMI is $48,079. So that is the average median income for our community. And to be low income, you have to make 80, you can't make more than 80% of that, which is $38,463 a year. To be very low is 50% of AMI, which is $24,039 a year. And then there is actually a category, which is considered extremely low income, which is 30% of AMI. That's $14,423 a year. There is some change in there, but that just kind of gives you an idea of how that AMI And we can see that in certain grants. Generally, we see the same numbers and calculations, but sometimes there's a slight shift in number of people in the household and how much money they're adding to the table, or number of children are in the household, and that can change how money is distributed. But that usually varies from program to program.
And so Lauren, are these numbers for a household or for an individual and more, they go up, you know, for the greater number of people in the household, or?
That is the median household income.
Okay.
So those numbers are based on a household.
Household, okay. And how, I mean, do they, does it specify how large of a household? I mean, is that two, is that four, is that, or?
Typically, what I've read from HUD is it's based on four people. I will tell you, the census shows our average family size is 2.63.
Okay.
But I think HUD typically refers to average median household income as four individuals.
Thank you.
And like I said, that's usually a starter place, and what we see is, in grants where this is involved, HUD has the base calculated number, and then how they're breaking that out by per person or number of children or various income sources changes based on that But AMI, or average median income or household income, is usually where it all starts. I think Marty is back.
All right.
Oh, and he needs to be unmuted.
That's what I get for drinking a Diet Coke before long presentation. So, so back to the, yeah, so this is, this is the NHI program that I was promoting here before, a paid non-political advertisement, by the way, but this is the area of Salina that would be eligible under that, under that program. So it is a lot of the city, as you can see, although still not the southeastern area. Employer-assisted housing has real, had some really interesting possibilities from a number of different perspectives. So from a producer perspective, this is, this is a project that's a very interesting one in a small town in Iowa called Sioux Center. And Sioux Center is a town of, oh, about, I think about 4,000 or 5,000 people in northwestern Iowa, and is very heavily industrialized and is a very kind of wealthy town. The industries and kind of players in town, a number of years ago, formed something called the Sioux Center Land Development Corporation. So this was a for-profit development corporation, not intended to lose money, but everybody bought stock in it, and so it had a fair amount of capital. And its goal was to build a golf course subdivision, which it eventually did. And so it had assets from that, and the industries decided that their next problem using that capital was to build workforce housing, build housing, houses, affordable, single-family owner-occupied houses for their workers. So they devoted that capital into home building, developed a subdivision that now has about 70 houses in it, which is a lot for a town of that size. And because they were sharing the risk and using their own capital, they were able to achieve some significant economy of scale. They could build five or 10 of these at a shot, be able to build, not exactly mass development, but achieve economies as a result of that, and then revolve that money as they sold these houses to their, to their workers. So they're relatively modest, they're not fancy, but they're eminently livable, and they've been very successful at it. And now they're using, they're using this capital pool they have, as you can see in this article, to build some multifamily as well, because that's really where increasingly the need is. So this kind of employer-assisted housing, I think, is something that really should be part of our strategy for Salina, and it needn't be grant-based. It could be, but by doing things like buying bonds, providing risk pools, construction financing, even a development company can become very active in terms of building housing for future employees and staff members. And I think it is a program that can be both rewarding to everybody and can be very helpful in terms of recruitment efforts and in terms of taking full advantage of economic development. So you can count on this being part of what we'll be talking about at our next time together. It really does have some significant possibilities for Salina. Operational tools, these deal with the operation side of the fence. So rebates and tax abatements, tax rebates, like the NRP, fit squarely within this, because these are, these are dollars that are off the operating side of the ledger, taxes that you get back, and so they don't have to be paid by residents or owners or tenants. Projects, the city or utilities could reduce or waive fees of various sorts, like water and sewer connection fees for selected projects, all of which has to be structured with specific criteria so that everybody doesn't think that they're entitled to those. And also a kind of basic assumption that there has, that there's some, there's not going to be equal treatment, because there's some projects that have gaps, and there's a public purpose in filling those gaps. Finance incentives, so this gets into the kind of cross-pollination of protection and operational tools, by which a production tool, which reduces the amount of debt and adds the amount of equity, reduces the cost of financing, which in terms, which in turn reduces operating gaps. So those kinds of financing incentives can be helpful. Costs or breaks on utilities. A program that has been successful in Minnesota has been the 4D program. A program that has been successful in Minnesota has been the 4D program, which is an energy, energy conservation grant and tax credit program that, that provides tax credits for, for energy conservation improvements, and that are associated with grants for different kinds of energy production, like alternative energy. So these, these are all things that in one way or another reduce the operating costs of, 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 of a unit, and really largely relate to rental development, perhaps more than owner occupied development. And finally, we come to resident oriented tools. And these, these have both rental and, and ownership elements. On the rental side, the, the, the Section 8 program, which all of you know about, is a rent subsidy program that, that is clearly a resident assisted or resident-based incentive tool, although it helps to fill housing units. This is another place where employer assistance to property owners or, or renters can enter into the, can enter into the picture as well, in terms of providing incentives for, for people to own or rent in the city. Indirect, tax credits or, or indirect rental assistance, that, that they reduce rents to the residents, because they basically push the cost of debt off to, or the, or the cost of, of finance off to, to another entity, namely the federal government. And finally, on, on this list, the concept of shared equity or, or crown, which are rent-to-own projects, can be, can be an interesting one. So in a rent-to-own project, again, often developed by a CHODO or CDC, the, a, a unit is built as a rental unit. It may even be built with, as a Lytec project, which, which Omaha's Holy Name Housing Corporation is used extensively. The, the renter is, gets a certain amount of, of homeownership training, and a certain amount of their rent payment is escrowed to fund a future down payment, which is then converted to equity. If it's a Lytec, it can't be the same house, but into a similar house, that they then have a, a, a down payment to, to, to buy. So it's a transitional program that gets people building equity in a community or a neighborhood, which can then be converted to purchase a, a home. From an ownership perspective, there are incentive programs that are direct, or payments that are, that are basically paying somebody something to, to buy, buy a house. They might also be down payment assistance, which I didn't list as such here, but that's a, a, also an incentive payment. Subordinated loans, home and CD, home, the home program and the community development block grant program are often structured in a way that they provide a, a second deferred or forgivable mortgage to reduce the cost of debt to the, to, to the homeowner. The house is built, but the homeowner gets a break by, by virtue of a very low interest or zero interest subordinated loan. Lenders consortiums are, are, are interesting bodies, because they can both provide construction financing and can provide loans on a public interest basis to people who are not quite bankable, who, who are potentially creditworthy, but have something in their past that makes them look like bad risks on paper. So for example, in, in Omaha, and, and I think I'll mention this in a minute, we have an entity called the Omaha 100 Corporation that started in the 1990s. And it started as a lenders consortium primarily to finance projects that are, there were larger projects developed by community development corporations. They would provide the construction financing for those through, through a, a consortium of, of, of local banks. And they have now converted more and more to, to providing and holding paper for, for, for worthy potential owner occupants who are not quite creditworthy, who fall into a higher risk pool. So, so, so they can, they can take a number of different roles. Loan guarantees, the classical one being the old FHA, the good old FHA program, established during the 1930s, which is essentially a guarantee to a originating lender that the federal government, if need be, will, will, will pay off a mortgage if there's a, a default. And finally, again, employer assistance, employer-based incentives to, to, to people who are buying, who are employees who are buying houses in, in a neighborhood. So specifically, our Sioux Center example is both a production technique, but it's also a resident-based technique by lowering the cost of those houses to, to, to workers. So here you see a description of the crown or rent-to-own program, and some of the product that's, that they've produced. This, this is a, in, in Omaha, is a very longstanding community development corporation that was organized by a Catholic parish as, as a, a program to really repopulate their neighborhood and to reverse blight in it. They have been probably in this state, Nebraska, and probably throughout the Midwest region, one of the most successful CDCs or nonprofit community development corporations that, that we have, in terms of effectiveness, viability, number of units, and diversity of projects. They've, they've been a very, very good agency.
Marty, can I ask, where, where did their original startup money come from?
Only names?
Yes.
Yeah, contributions. They, they, it's interesting. They started, it started out as two parish priests who, who neither one of whom are priests anymore. I, I've lost track of them. One of them became a housing consultant, by the way. Then, then the, the next and longstanding executive director of it was, was, was Sister Marilyn Ross and nun, who is just an incredible person. She retired a few years ago. And their, but their, their initial funding came from a combination of private contributions in the city.
Thank you.
And, and their, and their initial work was actually acquisition rehab and resale. So they were, they were buying wrecked houses on, terrible, houses in really bad shape in their, in the parish area. And they put together a construction crew to rehabilitate the houses, and then they would resell those. And that's really how they, they, they built their program, they built the viability of their program. And then eventually got capitalized through, like, the lenders consortium, the city, and private contributions. And they continue to do, they're a 501(c)(3), so they continue to do and be supported by both their own revenues and by, you know, an annual contributions campaign. But they have, they have built hundreds of units, several big subdivisions, significant rental development, the rent-to-own stuff, senior housing. It's, it's, they, they are, are a pretty big builder as far as community development corporations go. St. Louis University, this, this is not a small agency, but, but, but if you know, if you know SLU and, and, and know the neighborhood that they were in, it was not a very good neighborhood. And, and they set about, from a variety of reasons, both from the point of view of their religious mission, their civic mission, and also just to be able to make the school marketable to, to the students they wanted to attract, have really done a lot to rebuild the neighborhood, and it's been largely through employer assisted housing. So, so they provide information on housing, but they've gotten a lot of stuff built. And, and, and their incentives have been better interest rates and reduced closing costs on mortgages. They've worked with financial institutions on refinancing. And they give forgivable loans to staff buying homes, like, like this townhouse project in, in their, in their surrounding neighborhood. So they, they felt that, that neighborhood revitalization was really critical element of what they needed to do to attract faculty, and that they wanted to build a, a community around the campus, and have done a really great job of it. It's, it's, it's a pretty remarkable effort in St. Louis, which, which has a lot of other troubles, but, but the SLU neighbor, it's not one of them. So, so now, as we think about all of this stuff, and think about preparing for May 10th, we'd like you to think about, and maybe even, even in our remaining time here, to discuss your suggestions and thoughts about a strategic housing program for Salina. And the questions to think about, because we'll be talking to you in, in this sort of lecture mode, but also we want to really get into conversation as, as we move toward the, the real design of a program. What should we be focusing on? How should we be using our resources, whatever they might be? First of all, what are they? And secondly, how do we evaluate projects? How do we tell somebody yes and somebody else no? How do we balance new development needs and rehabilitation or housing conservation needs? What should our structure for producing housing look like? Should we, should we reinforce the CHODO? Do we work primarily through the private sector? Do we have some combination of the two? How are lenders and employers involved? What kinds of resources do we have to work with realistically? So we know we're getting some money through the, the American Rescue Act. Is that, is, is housing a desirable use for, for some of these funds? If so, how much? Some cities actually allocate funding on a regular basis to infrastructure and housing development. What, what, what can we afford to do, if, 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 if anything? So these are, these are really questions to think about. We'll certainly be thinking about them, but to think about for our, for our kind of critical discussion next time on May 10th, when we, we try to put all this stuff together.
Marty, I do have one, one follow-up question, if I could.
Yes, ma'am.
I've been trying to figure out how exactly to express this, so forgive me as I walk through it. Since bigger economies of scale are necessary for a lot of these projects that we're looking at, we're obviously looking at greenfield development and possible annexations. And in the past, when, well, when we go ahead and we get infrastructure put into those new neighborhoods or those new developments, at what point do we transition from having that land be categorized as agricultural use and categorized as like an, an R1 or R2 or R3? When, when does that, when does that transition ideally take place? Because there's different, because there's different taxing values, obviously.
Yes, yes. That's a, that is, that's a really interesting question. Normally, rezoning, a rezoning from, say, an ag zone to a, to a residential zone, to an R-zone, will take place when, at, when, when the project is, is, is actually planned and put together and, and, and ready to go. And I know that there's, you know, that, that, that one of the, one of the things is that the owner of the land is paying less property tax on agricultural land than they would on, on urban land, wants to, it, it's, it's an interesting thing, because you, you, number one, you want to have the highest certainty that you're going to get your, your, your property, your project approved. So, so you, 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 you want that to be in advance of your investing in plans and development costs and so forth. But on the other hand, you, you want to, you, you want to defer the higher taxes that come with being classified as urban land as long as possible. So it's a, it's a, it's a real, it's, it's a real question mark. I would say the time to do it, depending upon the nature of the project, is, is, is at a conceptual level. So that is, you, you've got enough information, put together enough information, that you know you've got a, a, a picture to look at, and to get approval of a zoning, of a rezoning from ag to that permitted use at that point, but you haven't gone to the process of doing all the construction documents and all the, all the other processing that's necessary. In other words, you, you try to, you try to hit the balance point whereby you, you might, you might be six months or nine months out from breaking ground on the project. You haven't, you haven't incurred all the development costs yet, which you don't want to do without the assurance of the rezoning. But, but the period of time in which your, your zone urban as opposed to agricultural might actually fall into the lag time that it takes the assessor to, to reassess the property anyway.
Gotcha. So like, but once the infrastructure has gone in the streets, the, the?
Then it's urban, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, you're, you're, you're deeply committed by that.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
Do we have any other questions from the commission? Well, we're a quiet bunch today. Well, hang on, let me, I, I noticed that we do have a couple of members of the public in the audience. If you have a question for Mr. Schugert on the housing plan, or any suggestions for us, you're more than welcome to approach the podium and, and share those with us. And if not, that's, that's fine, too. I don't want to put anybody on the spot. Doesn't look like I have any takers on this end, so.
You have to wake them up.
No. I appreciate it, and I appreciate staff also putting together the previous presentations so that we'll have the, the luxury of, of familiarizing ourselves, refamiliarizing ourselves with the previous presentations, and we'll be up to speed for the final one. Is there anything that you need from us? What do you want to, to hear from us? What do you need from us at this, at this point?
Your thoughts about those questions.
Mary Hodges, there are a few people from the, members of the public online, if we want to give them an opportunity. If anybody in the public online wants to, to speak now, if you would raise your hand, digital hand there, we can call you and recognize you to speak. And I don't see any hands.
Okay.
So Marty, would you say it's safe to say that in preparation for the next meeting, the commissioner's thinking about those last questions would be helpful? We're probably going to put together some framework and things like that, but that's, that's really what we're gearing in on.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. That, your, your, your thoughts. And you might, might even want to formalize that a little bit in terms of getting some notes to us, bullet points, things that you're thinking about before we, we, we really start to put this thing together.
That's, that's exactly what I was, that's exactly what I was going to say. You've got, you've laid out these questions for us and everything. Is this something that we should think about in the next few days and get something to Mistress Call and try to articulate a little bit about where we're coming from, so that you can help us find some common ground and some common themes in there?
Exactly.
Okay, so, all right. So we've got our homework, all right. Thank you.
Well, thank you, as always, for your courtesy and your patience. These, these have been hopefully good for you and, and, and certainly interesting for me, too.
And, and Lauren, I didn't mean to cut you off. Did you have something that you wanted to share?
No, I was just going to- No, I was just going to say that that next meeting date is May 10.
May 10.
Thank you for the opportunity, Madam Mayor.
All right. Thank you. Thank you very much, Marty. Appreciate it, and we'll see you on May 10.
Thanks, thanks. Be well, everyone.
Mayor, we have a, another strategic planning session, the 5th, is that correct?
Yes, it is.
That's correct, yeah.
It's May 5.
Yeah. I would say that it would be a pretty good time to collect our thoughts.
Absolutely. Great suggestion. All right. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
And we will resume at 4:00. Thank you.